...order, we have a special person here behind the podium that we need to introduce. This is Emma Beth Nihoff. She is our mayor for the day. She is a second grader at St. Mary's and she likes donuts. Which, that's the best, that's the best news I've had all day, that you like donuts along with the mayor. So there's two mayors up here that like donuts. She likes to, she likes dancing. She has a good time at St. Mary's and we're so honored to have her as mayor for the day. She'll be with us for several hours this morning, be with us during the meeting, so we're honored to have her. Her father is here. Tony Nihoff is here. Appreciate him being a part of this and getting her down to City Hall. She and I have shared donuts and orange juice this morning for a snack, so we're ready to go. So with that, we'll call the meeting of the Jackson City Council, November the 7th, 2017, to order. And ask Councilman Harvard Buchanan if he would lead us in our invocation and pledge. If he would, please rise.
Good morning, everyone. Let us petition God's throne of grace. This morning, God, our heavenly Father, the maker and creator of all things, we want to thank you for another day's rising, another day that we never have seen and another day we'll never see again. We thank you for your many blessings that you have so richly bestowed upon us. We pray that you forgive us of our sins that we have transgressed against thee. Father, we ask you to look in on the Brooks family, Anita Brooks, for the loss of her brother-in-law. We ask that you touch the foot family and pray that Vicki's husband does much better. We ask that you touch Sister Gigi Bray and strengthen her father. We ask that you look in on my wife, strengthen them where they're weak and build them up where they've been torn down. And if it be thy holy will, prop them up on the ever leaning side. We need you each and every day and we can't get along without you. Now, Father, as we enter this council meeting, give us a servant's heart on how to serve the people of the city of Jackson. And, Father, give us humility. If we too high, bring us down. If we too low, bring us up. If we too far apart, draw us closer together. Faith, hope, and charity. Charity is love. For how can we say that we love God and not love our brothers and sisters who we seek each and every day? That makes us a liar and the truth is not in us. Give us love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, that the tempting devil cannot separate us. Now, Father, there's been some tragedies all over this land and country, but it's good to know, and we need to know, that you are still in charge. You are God and beside thee there's no other. Comfort the weary families here and elsewhere. Father, we're leaning and depending on you. Our hope is built on nothing less than you, Father, your righteousness. Go with us, Father, and stand by us. We'll be forever grateful and we'll be mindful to give you the praise and the glory. These are all requests we ask in the marvelous, magnificent name of Jesus. Amen and thank God.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anita, if you would, on roll call, if you would show, Malcolm Brooks will be here. He called and he is in court in Chester County as an attorney, not as a participant, but I think he will be here. It's raining just a little bit late and I think I'd love the council members are present. Adam Four's approval of minutes, October 3rd, 2017, City Council meeting. Council members received a copy of those minutes. Unless there are any corrections, additions, or deletions, we'll accept those minutes as approved. Adam Five's the invitation to public comment. If there's anyone present who would like to make any comment under new business, once we get to that point, if you'll let me know, I'll be happy to call on you and let you address the council. And we have one proclamation this morning, Give Back Jack Day. And let me ask the participants, the members of Leadership Jackson class, to meet me right down here along with our mayor of the day and we'll get that proclamation off and running. This is a proclamation which I'll present to some members of this year's Leadership Jackson class. It's a proclamation, whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they're able to give, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it's fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Jackson. And now therefore, I giri gives mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2017, as Give Back Jack Day, as a local movement of Giving Tuesday in the city of Jackson, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. So I've got this proclamation and some member, Todd, if you want to.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate this. You know, this world is full of brokenness right now. I'm part of Leadership Jackson and we, you know, heard about so many different projects and this organization and, you know, that project, and I wanted to do them all. I can't necessarily do them all. So part of this is just trying to bring people together and tap into the global, you know, Giving Tuesday and just bring it to Jackson. You know, hopefully everyone can be a part of something that day, whether it's, you know, a simple act of kindness, whether it's, you know, coming together to, you know, help build something for, you know, somebody that needs it, or even, you know, donating some money, you know, to a good cause. So, and this should be a personal thing, doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, I mean, hopefully it can be something meaningful to each individual person, just some way to give back to the community specifically on this day and that can help kick us off into the giving season. Thank you.
Okay, we have no recognitions, we have no warrants on first reading, we have several on second readings. Item nine, first is consideration of ordinance to annex and ordinance to zone an area referred to as McAlexander Family Partners, generally located along the 650 block of Ashport Road, comprising a total of 71.52 acres, more or less. Opposed zoning for this annexation area is R S F eight, single-family residential flood hazard district. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion? Have a motion, second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Number two, under second reading, is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 3131 North Highland Avenue from OC Office Residential District, RG2, general residential containing 1.7 acres, more or less, submitted by Brookdale Senior Living. So moved.
Second.
The motion, the second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Third ordinance, under second reading, is consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 1716 South Highland Avenue from B5 Highway Business District to SC1 Planned Unit Commercial Development District containing 1.30 acres, more or less, submitted by Chadwick Bond. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, properly seconded in the discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Adam Four, under the second reading, is consideration of ordinance to close and abandon Dale Jamison Senior Drive located between South Shannon Street, South Thirby Street, submitted by Madison County. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, the second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes seven to two.
Okay, under new business, I think the first item, Susan, we were going to scratch that first item. Okay, if y'all would just scratch through the first item, if you're not quite agree with the contract, if you would. Adam Two is consideration of additional payment of $25,000 to Howell Dozer for underground concrete work at Bemis Mill.
Good morning.
Morning.
To bring you up to speed on the Bemis Mill project, if you remember, back in June, we took proposals for the demolition of Bemis Mill. Bids came in, they were pretty high. One was 749,000, the other was 700,000. We asked them to go back, take another look at their numbers and get back with us. They did. They dropped considerably. The low bidder was Century Construction in Mississippi, but he had told me that he didn't think he could get his bonds or his insurance for this project. So you awarded this to Century Construction for $170,000 pending receipt of the bonds and the insurance, and we gave them 10 days to get it to us. They didn't get it to us, so you said it was, it would be fine to award it to Bob Howell for 247,400. We did that. He demolished it. Then when he got out there, he saw some additional underground work that we had not taken into account and did not have it in the scope. And it was work to include the removal of sewer concrete tanks and a wall, the removal of tunnels from the east parking lot to the brick piles, in-ground concrete piers were removed and busted for hauling. He needed two additional days that were required for track hoe and dozer grading, and the complete brick and concrete walls with cross walls were demolished behind the basement wall, and they also found an eight-foot concrete floor with rebar. He wanted 65,000. We told him it was too much, so he came down to 25,000. So we're asking for approval for an additional payment of $25,000 to Bob Howell Dozer.
Okay, that's a proposal for the council. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval, is a second?
Second.
Second discussion from council.
Just as a point of reference, those tunnels that were removed, just so people know a little bit of Bemis history, those tunnels were under there because when the mill was operating, actually, energy that was produced by the mill cooled the Bemis Theater, movie theater across the street. That was the purpose of the tunnels, which was pretty ingenious at that time, 100 years ago, so.
It's an interesting fact.
That was, I just want you to know that little trivia.
Very good, thank you.
But we don't need the tunnels now.
No, we don't.
Mrs. Chairman, Ms. White, good morning.
Hello.
With respect to the extra 25,000, this was an oversight on our part that we didn't see that the contractor saw.
We didn't know about the tunnels and all the concrete that were underground. And when he got in there and started busting everything up, he found it.
So he came with a higher price than what you have?
Sixty-five thousand.
Negotiation led to 25,000.
That's right. Very good deal on our part.
But he didn't want to leave the tunnels because that would have been a safety hazard.
Right, it's a safety hazard and, you know, we're planning on building a park out there and we certainly didn't want anything to collapse.
Right, that's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Anita, on item four, under second readings, I think Councilman Dodd needs to change his vote to an affirmative vote, if you would. You show him as voting no on that.
I did not.
Yes, be no.
But you are voting no?
Yes.
Okay, six to, six to three on that vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item three, under new business, is consideration of resolution authorizing industrial development board to enter into an agreement with industries requiring payments in lieu of taxes.
Mayor, I think Larry Butler, the attorney for the IDP, is here to answer questions.
Oh, you mind coming up to the, to the podium and just read the council, basically, I guess the change in the public law had something to do with this, did not?
Yes, we're a bit late.
Yes.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Thank you. I didn't, I'm here more out of precaution. We had submitted this earlier, a month or two ago, and what this is about is that historically the industrial board, as you know, implements property tax abatements for new industry in connection with Team Madison County, the Chamber, and so forth. Historically, the board has never entertained a tax abatement project for any industry without the approval of the city and county mayors. That's sort of a standard. If the city and county mayors do not get involved and approve it, then the board will not consider it. In 2016, the wording of the industrial board statute changed to add a provision which required express authority from the city council for the board to waive taxes. Now, the statute prior to that did not require express authority from the Jackson City Council to waive taxes. The board just couldn't collect any taxes or payments in lieu of taxes for the board's benefit. So that word waive, we kind of looked at it and felt like we probably should go and get a formal resolution authorizing the board to negotiate and waive these taxes as they have always been doing. The particular resolution before you codifies exactly what we've been doing for the last 20 years, is all it does. It doesn't add any more power to the board, it keeps the approval of the mayors intact as required. So that's what it's about, just to clean up the process.
Okay, any questions for council as to Butler and the resolution?
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Got a motion for adoption, the second, second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you so much.
Sir. Item four is the plan department include the following streets for acceptance. Dan, we need to take these individually, or can we take them all?
You can take them all as one.
Okay, if there's no objection from council, let me just go through the list and we'll vote on, with one vote. Wright Mill Section 10A, Branching Pine Cove, a portion of Mill Stream Drive, Wright Mill Section 10B, Berdton Cove and a portion of Mill Stream Drive, Wright Mill Section 10C, White Bar Cove and a portion of Mill Stream Drive, Wright Mill Section 10D, a portion of Mill Stream Drive, North Point Lake, PRD, Phase One, Phase Two, and revised common area, Rock Point Drive, Rockwood Drive, a portion of Hanover Drive, and a portion of Efferson Drive. Those streets are for the council to have them accepted as city streets. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five is consideration of resolution to implement eminent domain action to acquire land for Bemis Park. I don't think we have an attorney.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, yes, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. This resolution is necessary for us to move forward with the eminent domain action that needs to be filed for us to acquire the property for the Bemis Mill Park. And so the process under the statute for eminent domain is for you to authorize that action to be taken, which will allow us to then file the lawsuit in court to begin the condemnation process.
There'll be several lawsuits filed, and one will obviously be against Mr. Morton, who did not adhere to his agreement with the city. We're still looking for him and have him pay for full demolition cost. And then second, he's not going to be a happy camper and sign over that property with us suing him. So this is why the eminent domain is needed to acquire the property to where we can start the work as soon as we can on construction of the park there in Bemis. Any questions?
Mayor, in that process, we are asking for him to reimburse some of the costs that we have for that, not that we'll ever get it, but.
We're asking him to reimburse us for all the cost of demolition.
And when you say the property, is this the same property we've been talking about, the same acreage? That, nothing has changed?
As far as I know, it has not changed.
It has not. Roughly 4.14 acres, I think, close to that.
And that's that same that we talked about before?
Yeah, it is. That's a footprint of the mill, really.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for council?
I just had one comment, I guess, for the record, though, this case generated in environmental court, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that was because of some things that he had not done?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to place on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anita, do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. There's a second, second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, Adam, thank you. Item six is consideration of resolution to implement eminent domain action to acquire property for McClellan Road improvements.
Yes, this is a similar motion, resolution. This will allow for the McClellan Road to be widened, which there's some safety concerns with, with that, and there is a need to do that. And so this is obviously the same thing. It's the first process and the step for us to take the property that's necessary to widen it, and we need to do that through eminent domain proceeding in court.
And we obviously weren't able to come to an agreement with the property owners.
That's correct. We attempted to compensate them fairly for the property that was taken. We do have appraisals of the property. It's, you know, it's not a huge portion of property for each of the landowners, but they were not able to reach an agreement, and so we had to move forward with the eminent domain proceeding.
Do you know how many property owners this affects?
I don't know.
Stan, do you know offhand, Scott?
I think he said, I think he said seven.
There's actually just lower actual owners.
Four, four property owners.
There's more properties.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Now, you're saying you tried to negotiate a fair market value for the housing with them?
Yes, as my understanding that they tried to negotiate before we would take it to eminent, to court, you would negotiate to see if they would accept the fair market value for the property that's being taken, when we're not able to come to an agreement. And so the next step in the process is to take it to court.
Exactly how much property on either side of the right of way are we talking, Scott or Stan?
Scott, come on up if you would. You've been involved in a lot of these negotiations and you might go over some of the requests from the property owners.
We're not talking about actual houses, we're talking about property extension from the right of way.
Right, basically, it's a 15-foot strip on either side of McClellan Road, which allow us to widen, put shoulders, really just to bank the road in the right way so that it won't throw somebody off the road. And then because there's side ditches out there, we, in doing that, will have to recut those ditches and disturb that ground. Really, a lot of what will return will be very similar to what's out there today, but if there's trees and stuff like that that have to be removed, obviously we can't give them back a, you know, a big tree that's, that's near the roadway now. We have talked with all of them. I think that we're hoping that with this mechanism in place that they'll realize we really have to move forward with the project and hopefully we can come to an agreement anyway. But we've just been back and forth and have not been able to reach agreement at this time.
So we offered them a fair market price, but they wanted more, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But when we vote this morning, you're saying it could still go on, the negotiations, or is this final if we vote today?
It's my understanding that, yes, we, we would still offer them the, the market value.
Oh, good.
As part of the project, we've made some concessions and have that in the design plans already. So, like I said.
But we vote for this, it's pretty final.
Yeah, well, it allows the project to definitely move forward because of the safety concern. And hopefully they, we can work something out, but if we can't, then it's my understanding that it, it goes on and lets us move forward with the project, and then they can work back and forth through the, through the system of this process to work that out at a later, at a later date.
And this road improvement project's for safety issues. There's been several wrecks around that corner.
Yes, especially in the heading westbound after you pass the bridge, there's a particular section of the road that, that more or less kicks the, the other way, and there's been several wrecks and injury wrecks there. The road drops off deep, there's a big culvert there, hits the side of a, of a blunt driveway section there, and so it's, it's just a dangerous area.
How far away are you in what they want and what we want to offer?
It ranges, it, it ranges.
So it's different owners?
Yes, yeah. Each one has different concerns and different.
About what's the range?
Huh?
About what's the range, though? Give me one.
It wasn't, it really wasn't all money. Some of them wanted to build, build a lake in their backyard, which really wasn't, didn't have anything to do with safety issue.
Some were sentimental trees. There's one lady there that's got the daylilies there.
So it wasn't about money? They, they didn't want more money?
A lot of it, no, really, truly, a lot of it wasn't about money.
Was one of them about money?
I think there was one that was kind of concerned about money.
What was the difference there?
And, and really, all of them. I mean, if you, you know, if we approach you and want your property, you won't.
Right, right, that's natural.
Yeah, personally, you think your property was worth maybe more than the actual.
I was just wondering how far we were on the price, 'cause not much we ought to give it to them, I think, but.
And we actually did. One, and I would say that one, one owner out there was in agreement that he was going to move, accept. And so, like I said, this really just is giving us the approval to come to them with that we, we have this ability, not that we're going to necessarily exercise it, but if we can't come to an agreement, we can't just wait, keep waiting and postpone the project another year and another year and another year. We'd like to start pro, the, the construction in the spring.
Scott, you said it was 15 feet on each side of the road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the city would have an easement?
If they are right of way.
Mayor, a few questions. If, if y'all can't come to an agreement on the price on it, we will pay it a fair market value regardless.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yeah, whatever the court.
The, the actual process is that, once we file the eminent domain proceeding, we go ahead and pay in the fair market value as per the appraisal that's already been done. And then the property owners have the right to take out what's been, what's been put into the court, which allows us to go forward with doing the project, and the case can still continue, and, and like he said, if the, if the property owners get another appraiser who has a different opinion, then, you know, at that point, the court can decide, or we can decide how we want to proceed and whether or not we agree with their appraiser, or that sort of thing. But the, the, we get the ability to go ahead and begin the project and compensate them as per the far, fair market value of our appraiser without having to wait for a later date for that to happen.
And then if they come back with another appraiser that's higher, then they go to court and the court will decide whether they're justified on that one.
Correct.
The other question I had, are they aware of this meeting today, where we're making this decision? Have we made them all aware of that?
I haven't made, I haven't had any more discussions with them. After, after we made the initial conversations and worked back and forth, I provided all that to Lewis and office.
So they weren't invited today if they wanted to say something?
I don't know.
Is anyone here?
Council's kind of in a catch-22 situation. You got, you got a, an obvious safety hazard, which is now part of the record. We know it's a safety hazard to, and, and to put it aside, to move, move forward and not do anything to it will certainly place great liability on the city in future years. And we feel like this is obviously the best way to get acquisition of property and still be as fair as the court can be, not necessarily the city can be, but the court can be, in getting them, renewing. court can be, in getting them remuneration for their property.
Without this action, they have the opportunity not to sign, and then without the signatures, we can't do the project, so this allows us to, really, the mechanism to go on and do the project, um, and hopefully they'll, you know, will come to an agreement, um, without having to go through that process, but we do need to have this mechanism, um, you know, in place.
With, with this safety hazard on record, and we don't, if we don't move forward with the project, uh, and there is an accident there, someone's injured, are we held liable for that because we are aware of the, the hazard?
Well, I mean, I would think that it's a possibility, we certainly could be pulled into court, you know?
I just don't understand why they weren't invited.
Yeah, I think the municipal council voted on this, if they were aware, that we were voting on it today, but it was...
Well, there's no rush, uh, we can postpone this, have all four of them here next meeting.
I think we need to table that.
I'd like to make a motion that we do postpone to a next meeting then.
Okay, all right.
That may help bring some seriousness to the issue with them, to help us negotiate.
Right, they need to hear the seriousness, but we need to hear from them.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone until the next meeting, and we got a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you all. Item seven is appointment of five member committee to study the liquor zones, um, everybody, Johnny Dodd, Charles Rom, David Cisco, Lawrence Brooks, I appreciate these five councilmen volunteering.
Huh.
To be a member of this committee.
I volunteer, no, I did, no, I did, no, I did.
Item eight.
What name did you say?
He said, uh, David Cisco instead of you.
Okay, thank you.
Board appointment, uh, Jackson Housing Authority, Andre Temple, reappointment, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
And a second discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine, budget amendments for this month.
Good morning, you have two this month. The first one that we have is for the Jackson Fire Department, asking for an additional twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to re-roof Station Six, and also an additional ten thousand dollars for the purchase of a Tahoe for the Operations Division.
Move for approval, second.
Motion for approval, and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have is for the Jackson Police Department, they've received a JAG equipment grant in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars for cost of equipment necessary to address violent firearm crimes. There is no match required for this equipment, and, uh, there are members of the police department here, if you'd like to discuss further what the equipment will be used for.
So moved, have a motion and a second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item ten, invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. Motion, the second, discussion, council, please vote.
And, uh, the vote is unanimous.
And item eleven, we need to acknowledge Captain Scott Conger for announcement.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, um, today's, it's a bittersweet day for, for me, um, March the last day, I'll be serving on the city council, as it's an exciting time for my family, uh, welcoming our second child in March, sometimes the greater duties we owe to our families require us to make other sacrifices. I like to thank my wife, uh, for the sacrifices she made, as you all know, appear that, that public service takes away from your family. Uh, I was elected to this seat while we were engaged, and she married me anyway, so I, I appreciate that, and she sacrificed a lot while I've been away and, and tending to those duties. Uh, the past six years, I can honestly say I've enjoyed serving on the city council. I'd like to thank the citizens of District Five for giving me the opportunity to serve them and to represent them, and I hope that I serve them well. It hasn't been without its challenges, but I think this council and this body has, has worked consistently to move Jackson forward, and it's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you. You taught me an enormous amount, and I thank all of you for your continued service to our city. I've enjoyed getting to know you and your families, we've all celebrated together, we've mourned together, we prayed for one another, and I feel confident that you all continue to do the work for the people. I'd also like to thank the city of Jackson's staff, uh, we have some of the greatest people in the city working for us, serving us, and protecting us. They get up every day focused on how to make this city better and how to serve the citizens. While I'm moving out of the city of the District Five, I'm not moving out of the city, and I've continued, uh, to be a part of the city and continue to see it prosper. I think we made tremendous progress over the last six years, but we must continue to work for all of us. I'd like this council to know that my wife and I are here to serve you all in any capacity that you see fit, and we look forward to serving, finding new ways to serve the city so that we can continue building a better Jackson for tomorrow. So with that, I request you all accept my resignation from the Jackson City Council.
Okay, is there a motion that Councilman Conger's resignation be accepted?
So moved, second.
We have a motion, and it's, we have a second, a second?
That was a quick second over there.
Discussion.
There was a quick motion, quick motion.
Discussion from council.
Your friends hesitate.
Before we, I think we have a second, before we, I wanna thank Councilman Conger for his service to this city, he's been a real addition to, to this council, and, and we've had some pretty tough decisions those past, past years that had to be made here, and he's handled those very well, and handled them with a lot of, a lot of homework being completed, uh, prior to those votes, and we appreciate his service to this city. Um, what we'll do, obviously, if the, if the resignation is accepted by council, then during the next month, we'll be taking resumes from people, uh, from qualified voters from his district, uh, to get their resumes to my office, uh, within the, the next, before the next meeting, and, uh, they'll be copied and sent out to council members, and from there, we will take a vote at the next, uh, council meeting in December, after that vote is taken, assuming that there will be a successful candidate, we'll take a short adjournment, uh, I'll ask the judge to be here to swear that candidate in, he will take his, he or she will take their seats at that point, and we'll move right, right ahead, so that's the strategy, so if anyone interested in, in, um, being a member of this council from that district, qualified voter, then if you'd be kind enough to give me your resume to, to my office, and we'll have some copies made and distributed to council. So, we have a motion and a second for, uh, to accept Councilman's resignation, is, in discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no, and one abstaining.
Means adjourn.
That was a quick motion, Gabe.
You know, hey, bye.